Okay, we're gonna get situated and call the roll in just a moment. At this time, I will call the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Sure, Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice President Harris is excused. President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Washington. Let the record show that we're joined by Councilmembers Lightfoot and Patterson as well. We have a new name for the committee, Budget, Finance, and Governance. If Director Utaro is here, I would make some jokes about the BFG. You like that, Katie? Big Roald Dahl fan over there? Okay. Great book, great children's book if anyone's interested. We are not gonna have any presentations today, especially since we have confirmation hearings after this of a recommended budget director of Corporation Council. So probably some questions will come up that are appropriate for what a presentation would be otherwise. I do want to just make two notes before we get into the legislative business. Number one, this council and hopefully this administration will be doing some pretty significant communications coming up around how people should get more information and potentially appeal their assessment. We had a great work session with Mike Zizara in the Assessment Office and learned a lot about both the informal appeal and then the formal appeal and the associated deadlines. And we know that this is a very big issue for many in our community right now and really want to encourage people to lean into the process and use the process that was described in the brochure that came out. But it never hurts to have a couple of short videos and other communication tools to give people the knowledge of how to do their informal and formal appeal to their assessment. And secondly, just a note for my council colleagues that we have a budget input form out right now. And just to remind everyone, James and Katie, remind me the deadline for that? The 18th? So by the 18th of January, please provide your budget recommendations or through this input process. There's lots of room for additional narrative and we will make sure that gets transmitted to the administration as they work on budgeting. Anything else will come up in future presentations as I would ask anyone to make recommendations of things they want on the agenda. I think I sent something out, Councilmember Martin and Monroe, anything you want on the agenda, please let me know. But other than that, we'll just go right into the legislative business, which we'll start with introductory number 29, authorizing an agreement for human resources legacy data retention. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I would like to ask one question around this specifically related to how this works with, integrates with Workday. And I know all of the, we have a significant amount of capital invested into Workday. So how does this contract proposed here integrate with that work?
This is for data that goes back 50 years or more that is currently in several systems that are no longer supported. So it's to put it into a system where we can pull it from. So right now, there's no integration with Workday that I'm aware of, but I can get more information for you.
Okay, I'd like to, thank you very much Director Nichols. I'd like to direct a similar question to our IT Director back there. Bill, is there any room for integration in this? Do these all need to live in separate systems?
So because this is historical data. As Director Nichols was saying, there's no easy way to get it into the Workday system. It's so old and on a system, as she said, that the integration would be so costly, it's just not worth doing. This system here will put it in a fashion that we can use it, have it, access it. Unfortunately, you know me, I don't ever want to introduce a new system if I don't have to. But this is a case where this was the right approach.
Okay. Any questions from council? President Melendez?
Yes, thank you. So I noticed that the first year of the funding was additional. I'm assuming there's some startup costs that are associated with this?
Yes, that's true, yes.
And the term was seven years. So is it the intention? I guess that's a long-term thing, so I just want to understand the rationale behind seven years.
The corporation that we're working with, we thought it would be the best use of resources and money and time that we have an extended contract so that they are with us for a very long time and helping us to maintain that data. Because that is federal, state, and local laws that say we have to retain data for extremely long times. So we wanted someone long-term commitment.
Great, thank you.
Any additional questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 30, authorizing an agreement for drug and alcohol testing. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, just one question.
Okay.
The transmittal states that the agreement will have an initial term of three years with the option of two additional one-year renewals. However, the six fiscal years are listed in the transmittal and funding from 2026 and 2027 are included. So is this, I guess, can you explain that discrepancy?
I believe that's an error, so we'll correct that.
So do we know if that's a?
It's calendar year, not fiscal year.
Got it, calendar year. So it goes through, okay, that helps. Thank you so much. And for folks in the audience, if you make sure your mic is on or closer, that would be appreciated.
I'll just ask one question that I know we've gone through before, Director Nichols, but it never helps for everyone to just hear it again. Please explain a little bit about drug and alcohol testing specifically as it relates to the constantly changing laws around marijuana and what the city's policies are and how those, I presume, relate to federal policy as well.
So I think Tom Miller is here, so I'm gonna let him speak to that because he deals directly with it, particularly with Hines.
Thank you, Tom.
So currently, the only positions we test marijuana for are DOT, federal DOT positions. All other positions at the city, there's no longer testing for marijuana. I believe that stopped in 2020.
And so federal DOT would mean anyone who's using any heavy equipment, heavy machinery whatsoever, correct?
Any positions that require a Class B or a Class A license.
Okay. Councilmember Patterson?
What about police and fire?
Police officers, I apologize, police officers, we still test for marijuana. Firefighter position at the city no longer requires, or no longer is tested for marijuana, pre-employment.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on this? Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Director Nichols. I'll take a motion, please.
I'll move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 31, authorizing an agreement relating to the Racial and Structural Equity Race Commission's recommendations. Any questions, comments, or concerns? President Melendez?
Yeah, just a comment, and this is to the council staff and team. I'd like us to organize a work session with the Urban League regarding the Race Commission and get an understanding of the progress that's been made.
Any additional questions?
Yes. Could you provide us in writing with a summary of how much has been paid to Urban League already? And just a list, you have a list right now of what services they provide, but what has been done recently? Thank you.
Any further questions from council? I'll just ask one. Is there still, I remember when this was, when we were first contracting with Urban League, I believe Lily, you were kind of facilitating and liaising with them. Is that still something that happens on a regular basis, whether it's you or another member of the administration? So what's the meeting cadence, if you don't mind me asking?
We meet once a month.
Once a month to just go over high-level updates?
Yes. We meet with the county, we meet with the city school district, and we meet with the Urban League once a month.
Great. Okay, I'll take a motion on 31, please.
Move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introductory number 32, authorizing an mandatory agreement for real estate title services. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move it.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And finally, introductory number 33, authorizing an agreement for the recruitment and selection of an executive director for the Police Accountability Board. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I'll make a comment.
Please.
So to my colleagues on council, I just want to acknowledge that this has been a long time coming. I know that the interim executive director has done great work to hold down the fort, but at some point soon, I know the interim executive director is really looking for some relief. So before you is an opportunity to consider Executive Search Firm. There was a process that underwent, and I'd invite actually anyone from representing the PAB to provide to council just a quick update on the process and how you landed at this firm.
Thank you. First of all, we--
Excuse me, is the mic on? It's a little button there. Is it green?
The red light is on.
Okay, green.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you. We started off by creating a search committee, and the search committee for the RFP process was made up of three members, myself, he, and it was also, we had our liaison, Rosebel, working. And we had several meetings going over the criteria. We looked at other model cities to make sure that it was all inclusive, the criteria that we were putting together for the process. And once it was approved by HR, we sent out, we released the RFP, we received five proposals, and we had several meetings going through those proposals, went through in detail. And what you have before you, the final selection, is the firm that really met all the criteria that was laid forth. The community engagement, engagement with city administration and city engagement with leadership staff in the PAB and also engagement in community. All of that was looked at, and the firm that we selected really hit all of the criteria that we put forth. And that's why we're putting this recommendation before you today.
Thank you. And with that, I'll move it.
I actually have a question first, and it may be for the PAB members, so if you're welcome to stay at the mic if you don't mind. Is there already a job description? I presume it's changed from the first time this position was hired?
Yes, we did create a job description, and that job description is on file, and Rosebel may want, can get you copies of the revised job description.
And I ask because I just want to be sure, the idea is not to retain the services of this firm, work with them to craft a job description that may use language that potentially may appeal to more people, whatever the case may be, and then send it, it is to send what you have currently on file as the job description?
No, one other thing, when we released RFP, we indicated that we were not looking for a firm to create a job description for us. We had that. Matter of fact, one of the firms that responded wanted to do those type of things, and it was not a firm that we selected.
Okay. Do we, Rosebel or James, Katie, do we have the job description from the, for the ED on file somewhere? You do, I know, but has council, does council have a way of getting it? Do we know yet? Would you share it with council staff so we can take a look? Great. Any further questions? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, can you talk about any plans for community involvement in the search process?
Yes, we did set a criteria for a minimum of two engagements with the community to ensure that we get that input from the community as to what they're looking for in an executive director. And there will be opportunities for the candidates to do that before selection is made.
Amazing, and I just want to say thank you for the documents you shared in this proposal. It's very thorough. It tells us a lot about the organization you chose, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, President Melendez made a motion.
Second.
It's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And that concludes the work of the BFG Committee. Thank you.
Just, just an update for those of you who may not know, we're just waiting, um, the Public Safety Committee will start at four thirty, so we got about eight more minutes, so for those of you who need to can do, uh, what you need to do, um, you have about eight more minutes. Thank you.
He said he was coming back. Okay. Oh, one, two, three, four. Need a fifth person here. Bitch.
All right, um, at this time, I'd like to call the, the Public Safety Committee to order. I'd ask the clerk, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Presenting ma'am.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Lupien. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Harris is excused. President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and first and foremost, by this being our first Public Safety Committee meeting of 2024, uh, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. I wish and pray that everyone is doing well and families are doing well. Uh, this is, um, a, a so real and exciting moment for me. Uh, I am transitioning, uh, from the Parks and Public Works Chairman, uh, to the, uh, Public Safety Committee to chair this committee, uh, for this cycle. I'm going to thank my colleagues and Mr. President and Vice President for their, uh, vote of confidence to, uh, place me in this role. This is where my passion is and where I've done majority of my work for over three decades, so I really appreciate, uh, being in this space and leading in this space. And with that being said, with, there are no presentations, um, today, but we do have some items after we conduct business that we do want to offer for consideration and information to our public and to, uh, those council members as well as we want to offer into the record, uh, as we move forward and how we're going to move, uh, or our goals, uh, into moving, uh, with a work plan for the Public Safety Committee for 2024. Just for information, uh, it was asked of me as the Chair, uh, was my privy, to consider if I wanted to have just a few members on, uh, the actual committee as you see in other committees, or if I wanted to continue with the entire city council on public safety. It was my wish and my desire to have, to continue to have all of council, all nine members on public safety. I believe that public safety is all of our concern, not that the other committees aren't all of our concern, uh, but I, I believe that public safety touches all of us regardless of what districts we may represent and/or, um, areas that we cover. So, uh, is my intent, and I wanted to, us to, uh, you will see from this Chairman, from myself, uh, a very collaborative spirit around public safety intentionally, uh, because it, this is an area where I think we have some common ground. Uh, I think, I think we all want to see our citizen, ourselves, our families and our citizens to be as safe as we possibly can be. And so, I would ask as we move forward for my colleagues first, that we move along with that as our North Star, uh, to bettering the quality of life for our citizens, uh, ourselves, our families, our citizens, uh, and, and I would ask that you work with me and I'll work with you and a, and I, and I created a plan so that we weren't just moving in the dark on this, on these issues and these concerns. And so with that, uh, we'll conduct our business and we'll move forward. Um, we do have, um, an item, one item, uh, introduction number thirty-four, authorizing agreement of amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget for the, uh, motor vehicle theft and insurance fraud prevention. Any questions, comments and/or concerns, uh, for Council President and then, uh, Councilmember Martin?
Yes, thank you, uh, to the administration, just looking at the, the year that was and the year that is. Uh, the year that was, we had several challenges, obviously, with motor vehicle thefts and can, can the administration maybe speak to some of the strategies and how this, how these resources will impact the reduction of auto thefts?
Let me, um, turn it over to, um, Deputy Chief first and then I'll add, um, some commentary after.
Okay, thanks Mayor. Yes, so the, for this grant, um, we have a grant manager that oversees this grant, so specifically for the money that receive, we receive for this grant, there's a couple of things that we do. First and foremost, the grant manager a lot, along with department members, they attend training. It's, um, we attend training nationally, regionally, and also locally. There's actually a carjacking training put on at the end of this month, a one-day training that goes over crime trends and investigative tools and how to address them. So, the grant pays for training for them to review and look over both national and local crime trends involving motor vehicle thefts as well as insurance fraud. Additionally, they work with the Defense, um, or the Division of Financial Services. The Division of Financial Services will provide them with cases of insurance fraud through the local insurance agencies, so they're given those cases and they'll work on those locally to try to drive down insurance fraud within our community. And then for motor vehicle thefts, they participate in that, um, the Monroe County Vehicle Task Force, they participate in that. Um, they have weekly, or monthly meetings with the DA's office as well as other agencies and other, um, resources that we bring in to combat and try to prevent and deter the motor vehicle thefts that are occurring. I know that, um, they've made some significant strides. We had a record number of motor vehicle thefts last year and we're hoping to decrease that with the education piece, the Kia and Hyundai, um, manufacturers coming in and putting in those anti-theft devices. So, we are working with multiple agencies as well as other, um, manufacturers and community members to drive down the mo- motor vehicle thefts and insurance fraud.
And I'll just add two to that, Mr. President, as well. Um, if you noticed, when we had this, um, this, this trend that, that came to Rochester, it started out west and it came to Rochester, um, and now cities that weren't experiencing it to the east of us, now they're, now they're starting to see it. We're on the downward spiral, the first six months of the years where we really saw the highest amount. And now, if you go back and look at the data, because of some of the interventions we put in place for that second half of the year in co- in, in conjunction with working with the county, it worked. Um, and being that we saw a lot of these motor vehicle thefts were being driven by young people, um, we, we, um, worked with the county and there was dollars that came with Raise the Age for, um, for, for programming that could be used for young people. And then our work with the county and the JEDS program has made a huge difference. Um, we want to continue that going, to continue that going into two thousand twenty-four to make sure that we see these numbers continue to decline. And that is making sure that when a young person is arrested for stealing a vehicle, if they have done that before, that we are putting supports around them to make sure that they don't do it again. And the data has shown, um, that less than ten percent of young people that, um, got into this juvenile stabilization program have reoffended, um, because they're being told how to go to school, their families are getting with resources that they might need, um, access to job training opportunities, access to mental health counseling, access to all those things. Um, so we think that all of those will help as it relates to young people in car thefts, because the vast majority of the car thefts that we're seeing were young people. We're seeing that, um, downward trend go down. The other thing is, is, um, can, the education piece is also important and I, and we, we, we need to continue to say that anyone that has Kia or Hyundai's, um, to make sure that they get the, um, the anti-theft devices if they have not gotten them by now, because those numbers are also what, what, what has, would have driven a lot of the, um, car thefts. It is very hard to steal a car, um, if you, um, if, if you have the anti-theft devices, which probably everyone in this room, um, car has, um, unless you have a Kia and Hyundai and you haven't gotten, gotten a theft device yet. So, that's, that, that's, um, extremely important. So, I think it's, I, I think it's, it's education and enforcement, um, are, are two important things, but also intervention, um, in the lives of the individuals that are doing this. Education, enforcement, intervention, um, I think are important things. But I think this specific, specific grant, as the Deputy Chief said, is more so, um, training in that types of things, which is important, but I think our strategy that I just mentioned, that's even more important to make sure we see a downward trajectory as it relates to car thefts.
Thank you. I acknowledge that this is not a lot of money for a Herculean task, but, um, just in terms of the strategy part of it and understanding the designation of, of high theft areas, um, could the council be provided with the, the mapping or the data that's, that has been identified for those areas, just so we have an understanding of what that looks like in our city?
Absolutely. And Jose, and if you can capture that, we can get a follow-up.
Thank you.
Councilperson Martin?
Yes, um, for the sixteen thousand dollars in fringe, uh, how would that be covered? It's noted that the grant doesn't cover it.
That would be separate, so they would work the overtime and then the fringe from the overtime would be paid out of that sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Got it.
So, yeah, they, they can't lump them together because they're two separate pots of money?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? If not, entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Now, we vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Introduction passes. Um, that is the only item that we have, so I'll take a moment of privilege and just draw attention to a couple of things that I want to bring forth, uh, this year for, um, business of the public safety. First of all, many of you have already in the council received the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition twenty twenty-three Solution Action Plan. I first want to, uh, thank the administration. Uh, I want to thank staff, city council staff, by, by the way, uh, I would ask if you wouldn't, if you would just indulge me and give them a round of applause. We have an amazing staff. Uh, uh, we just do, all right? And so, uh, they are amazing. They helped put together a wonderful plan. This was a community-driven solution action plan. It was extensive, hybrid, and in-person community meetings that were had to create this solution plan from the community. Uh, and so, I wanted to draw people's attention to that because we're going to be working very diligently to do our best to implement as much as we possibly can. Also, you will see in your, uh, all of the council members should have a newsletter that will be coming out monthly from the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. We are intentional about being transparent, about addressing these issues and educating our community on what we're doing and what's going on around this space, uh, around violence within our community and trauma. So, you will see a lot of, uh, good information as well as educational tools that we will be using to help, uh, eradicate gun violence and violence within our community through that monthly newsletter. And lastly, uh, all of, everyone should have, uh, received, uh, to include the mayor and his administration, and an email will be sent out. This is a public document. Uh, we're being very intentional and trans, uh, and trans, uh, and, and, and intentional about making sure that we're being inclusive to include not only all of council's ideas, but transparent to making sure that we're, uh, letting the community know exactly what our intents are. I'm going to read this into the record because it's, it's only a three-page document, it's not long, but it's the twenty twenty-four Rochester City Council Public Safety Committee Work Plan. This is a working document. It's coming from me as the Chair to the Public Safety Committee, to the citizens of this community, to administration, and it's open for input from anyone. Uh, and it, it started off as a memorandum that we've, uh, the, the staff has helped me to, uh, put it in this plan format. And so, um, overview, the Public Safety Committee reviews matters related to police, policy issues, criminal justice, emergency medical services, fire services, emergency management, preparedness, code compliance. A lot of people don't realize, a lot of things touch public safety, to include code compliance, emergency communication, in addition to any and all other matters pertaining to public safety in the city of Rochester. Areas of committee review and action may include, but are not limited to, public safety department functions and personnel allocations, funding allocations, in- internal department policies and external accountability, promotion of diversity, equity, inclusion policies at all levels, both within the departments internally and related to service delivery externally. Ensure the alignment of key performance indicators with public, with city public safety goals and objectives. Support robust community engagement efforts to ensure that the community interactions, priorities, and experiences with the city public safety departments reflect positive intent and outcomes. Establish of a regular data reporting process to provide the city council with updates on key strategic pro- projects, initiatives, and services. This is very, very important, that piece. And, uh, page two, overall goals of Public Safety Committee, these are the goals, and there's six. Provide a safe and positive community environment where all residents feel e- equally protected, served, and respected. Support the development of a comprehensive gun violence reduction plan as a component of public health. Access all city services to identify strategies to connect city residents with the most appropriate services and resources with a focus on those who have been victims of crimes or fire-related emergency, especially those in marginalized population and communities experiencing crime victimization at disproportionate rates. Provide increased efforts to attract and retain city youth and veterans in public safety employment with the city of Rochester. Provide sustained, high-quality public safety and emergency management services to meet the community's current and future needs through the resolution of challenges associated with the timely implementation of state-of-the-art emergency radio communication systems, effectively routing nine-one-one calls through the public safety answering point, also known as PSAP. Oversee and codify the work of the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition as a part of the Public Safety Committee, including holding committee hearings, issuing reports, and other communications with Rochester's citizens. And finally, accountability to the people. In order to assist the Public Safety Committee in meeting its goals, it is requested that the city department engage in provision of public safety-related services, providing monthly reports containing the basic information referenced below. Overview of three key performance indicators that most impact the community for each prospective department. Staffing demographics by positions and organizational chart, including race and gender. Overview of recruitment, hiring, promotion, retention, efforts by position and classification. Status of public safety facility capital projects, particularly those utilizing ARPA funds. Overview and update of all technological, techno- technology-based projects affecting public safety services, operation, payroll, attendance, radio communication, staffing, scheduling, case management, IT, et cetera. And finally, updates on specific projects or initiatives when requested. The Public Safety Committee will request the sharing of these reports and data to begin as soon with a target of February twenty twenty-fourth. To begin sharing this information with the committee and the community, the committee may seek additional information and presentations as appropriate. So, I entered that into our, uh, da- our, um, records as from the Chair, uh, and I also, um, offer for consideration and input. This is a working document. I'm open to all of my council members for any input that you may have considering this document, but I think this gives us a baseline and a guideline and you can have a clear vision of where I'm going as well as the legislation that will be coming forth through us, but we'll be looking through these things from these lenses. So, I, I thank you, Mr. President, for your time. I offer any questions, comments, uh, and/or concerns. Yes?
Um, I just want to say thank you to you, Chair Lightfoot, and also Councilmember Gruber. I, I do feel this being a turning point in how committees operate in the sense that input is being asked for, not only by us, but by community member, members also. So, for me, it's exciting. I, I feel hopeful going into this new year with this energy. So, I wanted to say thank you for setting that stage.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? President?
Yeah, I, I, I just want to echo Councilmember Martin. I think, you know, when we've had discussions about, and, and, and had some hard discussions and, and, and conversations about how we as a body collaborate, I think setting the tone at the committee level is important. And, um, I'm, I'm excited for the year that's ahead. I know that there's been a lot of great work that's been done, uh, specifically in the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition. I've had the privilege and the pleasure of, of joining those meetings. Um, and the Solution Action Plan is, is one part of the, the puzzle. I think the Public Safety Committee, the things that we will do around public hearings, um, that, that's going to take this to the next level, and I'm excited for the work ahead as a group.
And again, I, I want to thank, um, the, the mayor and his administration. Every one of our Rock Against Gun Violence Coalitions, he has had his staff at every single meeting. Uh, President Melendez has attended almost every single meeting, uh, and others, uh, Councilmember Patterson. Uh, we have three council members on the Rock Against Gun Violence Coalition to show you our passion around how important that work is. You have the President of City Council, the Vice President of City Council, LaShay Harris, also chairing the committee on that. You have the president of city council, the vice president of city council, LaShay Harris, also chairing a committee on that, and myself. So that is very powerful, and as far as us trying to really move, and we know that gun violence is, when you go and talk to any of our citizens out here, their safety and that is one of the number-one issues that we have in our community. So I want to thank RPD, who also through Captain Murrah, who have attended, he's a day one, he's been with us from day one on that initiative. We know that's not, there are many more issues that we have, but that is one that is at the top of our priority list. We thank the fire department, we thank 911, all of you for the work that you do, and we want to work collaboratively, but we feel like we want to take this to the next level. So I wanted you to know and be intentional about specifically what my expectations are as chairman of this, of this committee and going forward. And we look forward to having a very robust conversations, a lot of community input, and sharing and learning as the year goes forward. And thank you for all that you do. Dr. Gruber? Okay. All right, if there's no other business to come before the Public Safety Committee, we are adjourned.
And we will take a five-minute breather here, and the committee of the whole will convene at 4:55.
Nice to meet you.
Very good.
Good to meet you.
Yep.
Over in my career, I was the assistant to the deputy mayor.
Very good.
Jeff Carlson.
Oh, yes.
Two thousand to two thousand and four is part of my prior tenure, so I just wanted to say hello.
It's good, good to meet you, a name I'm well familiar with.
Oh, okay.
As I've understood the history of my predecessors, so.
Yeah, so it feels good to be back.
Good, good to have you back.
I had retired from here, so I thought April 1 of 18.
Okay.
River Landmark Society just rolled out its retirement, and Senate County, so I came back for three or four months, and then until five years.
It's funny how that happens.
I just ramped up and got involved with Bridget's campaign.
Okay.
Grew up in the northwest, there's my family up there.
Yep.
With the head administrator in Lisle back in the day, so it just kind of felt like the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Modest thing.
Yeah.
Not going to have a lot of stress or anything.
It's all right, but you're, but we, but we roped you back in.
So it feels good.
Yeah, good, nice to meet you too. Okay, sounds good. Oh, I know. You're just, nothing. I didn't, I didn't.
Right as.
At this time, I'd like to call the committee of the whole to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
President, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice President Harris is excused. President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
So before the committee of the whole, we have two introductories today. I'm going to read them out for the record, but we're going to hold both items in committee as we have a confirmation hearing for both of them following. So introductory number thirty-five, a resolution confirming the appointment of the budget director. We are holding a confirmation hearing in a few minutes here at five o'clock for the budget director this evening. Therefore, this item will be held in committee. Introductory number thirty-six, a resolution confirming the appointment of corporation counsel. Again, we are holding the confirmation hearing here this evening, so therefore the item will be held in committee. With no further business, the committee of the whole stands adjourned. And now we will begin our confirmation hearings. The meeting will come to order, and I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
President, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien. Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice President Harris is excused. President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
So we're here today to hold a confirmation hearing for the budget director of the city of Rochester. Introductory number thirty-five has been submitted to us for consideration, naming Suzanne Warren as the mayor's appointee. Mayor Evans, would you like to make an opening statement regarding the appointment of Ms. Warren?
Yes, I will be brief, but I would say persistence pays off. I have long told Suzanne Warren that one day she should be budget director. She served as an interim capacity for a little bit before our former budget director came on. We've been, I was rebuffed several times, but we finally got her to yes. And Suzanne Warren is more than qualified for this position. I'm sure you will hear from her, but she grew up in this city. When I mean the city, I mean the city government. I mean, she has had a number of different positions, both in finance and within the budget. When I announced that Suzanne was going to be put forth to counsel for budget director, the staff, her teammates, folks that she has worked with, almost stood up and gave her a standing ovation. And I think that is because she works well in the sandbox. Anyone that knows budget knows that sometimes budget directors aren't popular because they have to say, look, these are the dollars that we have to work with. Sometimes they have to say yes or say no. But one of the things I've always respected about Suzanne is that she has always done a great job in working with departments to help them craft and get to where it is they want to be within their budget. And that, that's by educating them, by working with them, by holding their hands if necessary. The other thing is, is that she knows about every single department. She can give you the intricacies of the historical context of why things are, why the numbers are, what makes up our budget, places we can look for for more dollars. So this is, this is a very important position where you have to have someone with a lot of skills, expertise, and knowledge, but they just can't know the work, they have to know the people. Because she has a staff that works for her on the, on the budget stuff, and she knows all that. But she also needs to be able to work with MBD, or DES, or city council, or the mayor's office, right? That part is an intangible, she knows the numbers. But a lot of people don't realize the budget director also has to know the people. Because behind all those numbers are our employees, but more importantly, they are human beings, but also people who are outside of the walls of city hall, because every number that we do affects our larger community. And a budget director has to understand that, and Suzanne Warren is someone that understands that. So I wholeheartedly ask for your indulgence and support for her for budget director, and I want to thank her for agreeing to serve in this, in this leadership position. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Evans. Ms. Warren, would you like to provide an opening statement?
Yes, I would. Thank you so much, mayor, for your kind words, I really appreciate it, and timing is everything. I do have a short opening statement. Good afternoon, honorable members of city council. I am so excited to be seated before you for consideration of the position of budget director. I want to thank the mayor for having the trust and confidence to consider me for this role. I'd also like to thank the deputy mayor Burns for his encouragement and guidance in taking this next step. Almost twenty-eight years ago, I entered this building for the first time as a junior accountant in the Bureau of Treasury. At that time, I could never have imagined I would be seated before you today. I'm thrilled at the potential, if confirmed, of leading the office that Councilmember Gruber refers to as small but mighty. OMB consists of a small crew of diverse, dedicated analysts that excel at managing data, identifying trends, and providing high-quality financial reporting that enables the city to continually produce a balanced budget and maintain an excellent credit rating. I will look for opportunities to further the knowledge and training of each analyst so that we can continue to provide guidance and assistance to each department to accomplish their objectives. I continue to have the privilege of working for and with many talented and knowledgeable public servants. In addition to learning the basics like balancing a budget, I learned the importance of being held accountable, being transparent, acting with integrity, and making a budget a statement of priorities and values. My decision-making will always be guided by considering what that decision might mean to a typical resident of the city. We will surely face financial challenges in the coming years as certain expenses grow and ARPA funding begins to phase out. We will need to work together to develop creative solutions to continue to support investments that make Rochester a hope-filled city with an exciting future. I look forward to working with the mayor, senior management team, city council, and other community partners to make this a reality. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Warren, for that opening statement. So to my colleagues, what we'll do is we'll go from left to right of the dais. I'm going to ask that everyone try to limit to two or three questions out of the gate, and then we'll come back around if there's additional questions at the end. So I'll lead off with just, just one question, and then I'll turn it to Councilmember Gruber. In terms of OMB, there's been a lot of changes in a very short period of time with the budget book and with the technology we're using, and, and how to make that more accessible to the public. Can you talk about your vision and how, for OMB, and how you plan to implement it?
I do, so my vision for OMB is to retain it being a strong OMB with knowledgeable analysts able to multitask and ready to support the administration and be able to empower departments to accomplish their goals. I'd like to encourage training amongst the analysts, further develop the capabilities that I know exist within Open Gov. I think we just kind of touched the surface with the budget proposal this last year, so I'm looking forward to definitely more opportunities to expand that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruber.
Yes, and first of all, thank you for, did you say twenty-eight years?
That's correct.
Thank you for your twenty-eight years of service, and I certainly echo Mayor Evans' statement that there's very few people who know the budget the way you know. There are very people who know anything the way you know the city budget, actually, to be, to be honest with you. But I do, I have two, I guess, philosophical questions. One, you mentioned in your statement about the ARPA dollars that are going to be phasing out. ARPA was undoubtedly a blessing to every community, but it's also, there's, there's the other end of that, which is that it's going to be very hard to kind of be an ARPA withdrawal when we're, when we don't have that money anymore. And I'm sure there's a lot of cities across the country that are very nervous about this. I'm sure that OMB is too. What's your philosophy for how we're going to wean ourselves off of these dollars over the years?
So excluding any capital investments that we've placed using the ARPA dollars, I think it's going to come down to evaluating each of the programs that we've put in place, the workforce development, the violence prevention programs, and really determining if those programs are successful and how we can continue them. I don't think it's any secret that we still struggle to fill positions citywide, as well as most entities throughout the state, the city, the nation. Everyone seems to struggle with these vacancies, and I think it's really going to come down to evaluating choices and making priorities as to what we continue to do and what we may have to give up.
Thank you. And my second question, you and I have had this conversation over the years, and it's not news to anyone that one of the greatest threats to budgets, in particular city budgets, is overtime. Overtime has been a massive issue for many years, but probably exacerbated by the last three years, as you talked about with some of the vacancy rates as well and how that impacts overtime. What is your strategy? What do you want to see us do to try to reel in overtime to at least be a little bit more, so we can at least be a little bit more predictive about what it is?
I think we've done a good job over the past six months with working with, actually maybe- I think we've done a good job over the past six months with working with, actually, maybe a year and a half, working with departments to understand where the vacancies exist, especially in the police department, and what drives that overtime. Is it, a lot of the overtime that we experience is because a certain department is structured a certain way. And so, I think you have to kind of be willing to move forward with changing how things operate to reduce that overtime. And we definitely, we still have monthly meetings with RPD about their overtime. And I think it's definitely a work in progress that we will continue to work on. We're lucky enough to have the savings from the vacancies that I mentioned to offset those overruns and overtime. But definitely, we'll keep an eye on things and hope that you're actually, you know, not stressing people out by working too many hours, but encouraging employment and, you know, getting people jobs. That, to me, it's always been, what's your base operation in filling those positions first?
Thank you, I yield.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I echo my colleague's sentiments. And thank you, Ms. Warren, for your twenty-eight years of service. Truly appreciate that. I have two questions, Ms. Warren, and the first one is, what role do you see OMB playing when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion?
So, I would say we're really lucky to collaborate with HR in the evaluation of the budget equity tool that departments submit each year, which was made a required part of the budget. So, we are able to work collaboratively with HR to look at budget proposals and get departments to understand and make sure that any programs that they're proposing or any changes that they're recommending work to achieve our diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. You know, we are able to, you know, kind of have that discussion with departments before things get into the budget book to make sure that we're investing our dollars wisely and we're really moving towards our common goals.
And my last question, thank you for that answer, Ms. Warren. Will you be able to meet the city resident requirement?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
So, I will say there's an education gap amongst council members as it relates to the budget, the process, the timelines, all of that. How can your office fill in that gap and provide education and information around the budgeting process and make sure that we all have, you know, the same information coming into budget?
We are always happy to meet with you and your staff to work through what's included in the city charter relative to what needs to be included in the budget and any of the timing that's included in that section. Always happy to work through the process of, once the mayor's budget comes to you for review, to work through the review process that council staff goes through. And I think we, I think we did a good job of working with you guys this past year, the resolutions of budgetary intent, and, you know, being supportive if there's something that you see that you wanted to amend and working through that.
And one last question. When you hear the phrase, "A budget is a moral document," what comes to mind for you?
A lot. There's a lot of choices that we make that we need to make sure that we're considering the citizens of the city in when we make decisions to stop snowplowing sidewalks or things of that nature. Not that we've made those decisions, but you have to look, and that's why in my opening statement I said, I try to look at every decision that we make in terms of what it means to the typical citizen. You know, is there a child walking to school that is relying on that sidewalk being plowed? You know, what does that mean to the average person? When we raise taxes, what does that mean in terms of what that's going to do to that senior citizen who's already on a fixed income? When I worked in Treasury, I sat in the office at one point where an older woman came in and did not realize that her property had been sold at our foreclosure auction. So, those kinds of things have always stuck with me, and that's why I try to bring that to the budget as well.
Thank you so much for all you've done for our city and what you'll continue to do in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson?
No questions at this time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hello, Ms. Warren. I had the opportunity to speak with you at some length today as I was having my kind of orientation and talking with department heads, so I appreciate that. You've been in the role of being a deputy director or assistant director for quite a while and, you know, under different people. What is the kind of leadership style that you bring to the office?
So, I think I've always been kind of a behind-the-scenes person. I've always worked to figure out how things, I've always tried to figure out how things work. I like to put together puzzles. I like to know why and how things are done. So, I think that gives me a good basis to step up to in terms of becoming the Budget Director. I'm not afraid to get in the weeds and help out with everything and, you know, start to transition to the bigger-picture person.
And when you were talking about people also cross-training, I think is a great aspect.
I think it's, especially in an era where a lot of people are perpetually transitioning from job to job, it helps to have that cross-training knowledge so that if I have an analyst that's focused on DES for the last ten years, they also know how to deal with the budget in the fire department, right? There's so many nuances to what we do at the city in terms of labor contracts and wages paid and expenses. And it helps for people, every analyst, to have that broader knowledge on how to deal with things.
And I just wanted to share that from my professional experience working here at the city, both on the council side and then also on the administration side, coming from either perspective, I'd always found you to be very forthcoming, helpful, great at explaining things, because again, there is such a high level of nuance. And I've found you to be somebody who doesn't jump to quick decisions because you know there's more behind it. There are other things that you look deeper into, and I think that is a good quality for a director.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me a warm-up today, too, for the most part.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, how are you today?
I'm great, and you?
Good. I had the opportunity to ride up the elevator with your husband, and he seems to think you're pretty okay.
I wasn't planning on him being here, so.
Well, he's pretty excited about this time with you. So, my questions are just piggyback questions from two of my colleagues asked about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it was, the questions were pretty general, and the example you gave was really about, you know, the average citizen. So, I want to ask you specifically about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And you mentioned in your opening statement that you believe in investing wisely. So, what does a wise investment in our low-income communities look like to you?
I am a huge fan of homeownership. I believe that that's how people build generational wealth. I think I agree wholeheartedly with how the mayor views that. And I would love to see that that is pushed forward to the broader community within the city. I think it's, you know, from a diversity, equity, and inclusion standpoint, that that's the American dream. I don't mean to sound hokey, but I believe that that's the best thing that people can own and be proud of.
Okay. You also, in your opening statement, talked a little bit about accountability. So, I think accountability, as it relates to abiding by like formalized rules and expectations that are given to us, aren't that challenging. But in terms of your internal accountability, what are some of the accountability principles that you yourself would follow as a person holding this very important role?
I will admit, when I've made a mistake, I have made many mistakes in the past. I won't say many, but I believe that when you make those mistakes, you learn from them. And I think that, I just want things done correctly and fairly to citizens, to employees, to the broader community. I just believe in fairness, and I'm willing to be held accountable for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I have one additional question, then I'll check with my colleagues to see if there's any additional. So, related to the CIP process, I know that, you know, we have a five-year outlook year-over-year, and it fluctuates, you know, sometimes a project gets delayed, sometimes a project moves up in the years. Could you commit to helping council really identify, because it's a lot of work for us to see what moved? What has moved year-over-year? And making sure that when we get the CIP, that there is some supporting information that can help us navigate the CIP and the changes that have been made?
We have talked at OpenGov a couple times. We're not sure if the functionality will exist there, but I definitely can commit to giving you the ability to see how things change. I don't have an issue with that.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions to my left? Any additional questions? All right. Hearing no other questions, that concludes our confirmation hearing for the Budget Director. This legislation will be considered at our next council meeting. Thank you, Ms. Warren.
Thank you.
You are dismissed. So, we will now move on to the confirmation hearing for the Corporation Council. Introductory number thirty-six has been submitted to us for consideration, naming Patrick Beeth as the mayor's appointee. Mayor Evans, would you like to make an opening statement regarding the appointment of Mr. Beeth?
Yes, I've known Patrick Beeth for a long time, and I'm honored that he has agreed to accept the Budget Director position. How I really got to know Patrick Beeth, and I'm looking at some of my council colleagues that were here when I served on council, was, if you remember, we worked very closely with Patrick during our time on council when he was called up to be the interim Corporation Council. And he served under our previous Corporation Council. Patrick has a breadth of experience, as I'm sure you could see from his resume, not down in New York City, on all sides of government. But one of the things that draws me to candidates in my administration is their ability to collaborate, take time, and explain things to people. I'm not a big fan of lawyers. They're important, because sometimes you can get an attorney that thinks they know everything and talk down to people, and that is the way it is, the law. Patrick has such a great quality as it relates to explaining things to people and how he treats people. And that's important in this business, particularly in City Hall where I have a lot of egos, right? And we all have egos. Nothing wrong with having an ego. We have to keep them in check. And the Law Department is responsible for dealing with all of these things. You know, people often think, "Law Department, maybe they just sue and take lawsuits." But it's so much more involved in running a Corporation Council, a Corporation Council. All of our things we vote on, all of that originates from this stuff, is contracts. So, imagine the hundreds of thousands of contracts that flow through the City of Rochester on a regular basis. And people see us, ladies and gentlemen, councils, the purse strings. They see us as the honeypot. How can I get the biggest dollar from the city? His department has to look at all of these contracts and deal with departments that are doing these contracts. In order to do that, you have to have the personality and the heart to be able to connect and work with people. And I believe that Patrick Beeth has that. I'll also say that Patrick, and the last point I'll make, is that he understands the importance of trying to build a law department where people can come up the ranks and recruit people. Big on diversity, you know, it's always tough to diversify these offices in government because we don't pay a lot of money, right? And a lot of folks say, "Thank you, we're going to go to a bigger firm and make bigger money." But Patrick has made that commitment to working with the Greater Rochester Women Attorneys, Rochester Black Bar Association, to do what we can to encourage people to consider a career in government. It's still a good career. It's still a good thing to do, and he's a good example of that. Because he can tell people, "Look, I came up to this." He was in government in New York City and here. He probably could have gone a long time, even gone elsewhere, but you have to have the heart, and that's how we can try to attract and retain people. So, he's big on making sure that these folks. And in fact, I tease him, he's trained such good people that they go and get bigger and better things, and then they come and work for the city, and then they go on to big time. So, we want to try to, so that's, I think that's also a testament. We hate to lose them, but that also shows you what they were able to learn in the Law Department, and we saw them go on and do other things. We just saw that last year with a couple of folks who, someone that did well in our department and then went somewhere else. So, for those reasons, I think that Patrick Beeth is a great candidate for this. And then the other point I'll make, last point, I'm sorry, I said this before, I said that last time, but this really is the last point, is that the Corporation Council also has to work with council. And I've worked, and I've watched the way, Patrick would not be sitting here if he was not able to work well with council. And I've watched him over the years, from even when I was on council to now, to how he interacts with council. And that's extremely important as well to the administration. And I believe, just from watching him, that he's worked well with, interacting with city council members. Because to me, that is also extremely important. The city council has to know that they have a person that is going to give them straight answers. If they don't know the answer, they're not going to make it up. They're going to say, "I don't know," and I'll get back to you. And that they're willing to also work with not only the administration, the members of the administration, but also members of council. And the last tidbit on Mr., he's probably going to shoot daggers at me for telling you this, but he's in a community band. He plays the French horn, which some of you may not have known. So, I think that that also shows his community involvement as well. And I didn't tell him, Mr. President, that as part of his confirmation hearing, he's going to be required to play a couple of notes for you. But for those reasons, I hope that Patrick Beeth can earn your support as Corporation Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Evans. Mr. Beeth, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, President Melendez. Thank you for the very kind words, Mayor, and I think we'll all be happy that I did not bring my French horn this evening. We can rest easier. And also, thank you, Suzanne, for going first. I'm going to be very, very brief with my opening remarks. I'm sure you have questions, and I'm excited to answer them. I've spent my entire career as a public servant. The mayor said, "A career in government, that's what I've had." I started in New York City before I was an attorney. I took some time before I went to law school. I didn't go to law school until I was thirty years old. I started at the Civilian Complaint Review Board in New York City as a civilian investigating allegations of police misconduct in the NYPD. I was an investigator there for two years, pretty quickly promoted to supervisor. I was an investigator there for two years, pretty quickly promoted to supervisor, oversaw a team of 10 investigators. It was great work, it's work I believe in, and it's work I'm glad I've done because it gives me a great perspective in my current role and in the role I hope to take on as Corporation Council advising both the RPD and the PAB. I want to fast forward from where I started to where I am now. I've spent the last five years as a Deputy Corporation Counsel. It's been terrific. The Law Department is a small department. We have, right now, 15 attorneys and eight support staff, but we're involved in everything that the city does. The mayor's right, thousands of contracts. We're dealing with risk management, we're dealing with it on the front end and on the back end. So as we're preparing to enter into projects to acquire property, it's the Law Department that's by the side of NBD or DES, negotiating the contracts, writing the real estate instruments to make sure that we're putting the city in the best and safest legal position as we move forward with those projects. Inevitably, things sometimes go wrong, or people think sometimes things go wrong, and we get sued. And it's the Law Department who takes that litigation on and represents the city to the very best of our ability. No day is expected in this job. You don't know what's coming in the door, there's novel issues all the time, and no day is easy in this job. But that's exactly what makes the job so fulfilling. And I am very excited to continue to work for the city of Rochester in the new position of Corporation Council, if you all will have me. So I want to thank the mayor very much for asking me to be his Corporation Counsel, and I'm excited to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Beath. So I'll open it up to my colleagues for questions, same format, two or three questions, left to right at the dais from my left. And before I pass it over to Councilmember Gruber, I just want to make a quick statement to follow up on something the mayor said. So to my colleagues, I happened to be at Cameron Community Ministries, probably a couple of months ago, and, you know, having a meeting with some of the staff there, and in walks Mr. Beath. And I'm like, what is going on? What's going on here? And he was actually there to tutor in the after-school program. So Mayor, when you say "in the community," Mr. Beath is in the community. So with that, I'll turn it to Councilmember Gruber.
Thank you very much, and Patrick, thank you for your years of service to the city as well. I didn't realize until reading your resume that you studied history at Binghamton University. We actually overlapped there. My first question is, what dorm did you live in?
Ray Fues, Dickinson Community.
Okay.
Don't judge me.
Judged. Too late. So as you know, in your time here, council, and in my six years, council has made a couple of declarative statements that we are going to go have our own council. And we have tried, and we have struggled for some of the same reasons that I think it's a struggle, as Mayor Evans mentioned, for the city to have a full Law Department. Whether or not we're going to have our own council, I think, is immaterial for this conversation. Right now, we don't, and I want to understand your philosophy around being the lawyer for the administration and for city council.
Sure, thank you. So the charter says that the Corporation Council attends to all the legal business of the city. In my mind, that means exactly what it says. We are legal counsel to all the departments and to city council. Not everybody in the city agrees on everything all the time, is the least shocking thing anyone's said here tonight. So the Corporation Council's office is constantly mediating disagreements and disputes between individuals, between departments. Oftentimes, folks are on the same page, and sometimes they're not. There's no difference, to my mind, in Corporation Council's role in mediating a disagreement between folks in NBD and DES, for instance, as a disagreement between folks on the administration side and the council side. That is the role of the government attorney, is to see people through those disagreements so that we can all come to a conclusion about how we're going to proceed in a particular policy direction. That's the work that I've done as a lawyer since I joined the bar. I've worked in public service my entire career, and it's the work I hope to continue to do. There will arise actual conflicts. They shouldn't arise frequently. When they do arise, though, that's the moment for the Corporation Council's office to identify the conflict and say, this is not something we can be on both sides of, so somebody has to get outside counsel. So I think as a matter of law, I see no problem moving forward, continuing to move forward, representing the administration and council. I don't think that there is a priority between the two. I think we have a number of clients, and we represent all of them. I would say that in representing city council, we represent, I represent, the body. So the body speaks through a majority or speaks through the leadership. And so I think going forward, it behooves my office and city council to ensure we have a practice in place or a procedure in place to make sure communications and advice are flowing in a way that makes sense for my office and for the body.
Thanks. I want to push on that just a little bit further, because most of what you talked about, which I agree with everything you said, but it was related to if and when there's conflict or disagreement. I think one of the challenges that this council has had over the years, I can only speak from my six years, this is not about a specific administration or another, just generally speaking, is about the information that flows to council. Not if and when there's a disagreement, but information. And of course, there are some things that council, that city council, we may want to know, but it may not be our right or obligation to know, and there are other times where it feels like that line's a little blurry, and that the stance generally has been for information to not flow fully to city council. And I'm wondering if you can kind of speak to that and speak to your philosophy, not about disagreements or conflict, but information sharing?
Yeah, I think that, to some extent, I can't answer that question in totality, right? Because I don't know exactly what situations you're talking about, and in the role as Corporation Counsel, I too may be in the dark about certain policy efforts. What I can tell you is, you know, my view is where a project or a question is going to affect people, the people affected should be brought into that conversation as early as possible, not only for their own interests in being able to contribute to that project or question, but to ensure that we don't have inefficiencies down the road. There's really no sense in taking three steps toward the finish line, then bringing a crucial party in and having to go back to square one because now there's new opinions, we've got to start again. It doesn't help anybody. And I think we've seen that. I think we've seen that, I've seen that in the past. So my interest would certainly be to identify stakeholders at the outset and do what we can to make sure communication is made to folks who need to be weighing in on issues from the get-go.
Thank you. Lastly, from me, when we set out to write the Police Accountability Board legislation five or so years ago at this point, there was not the cooperation from Corporation Council at the time. I think that proved to be a fairly damaging thing in the end. Given what we know about what the appellate court just ruled, inevitably, there's going to be conversations by this city council about police accountability generally. What is your, I'll ask it in a more straightforward way, will you be cooperative in that process?
Yes. Shall I go on?
If you'd like to.
I was in the Law Department at the time that the legislation, the current charter provision for the PAB was being drafted. The Law Department stepped out of that process. We did that largely because we did not think that portions of the law that were desired were lawful. Setting aside the Court of Appeals decision, and entirely in retrospect, if I were to do it again, still thinking that provisions were unlawful, I would, if I were Corporation Council, engage in the process. Because I think there are a number of provisions in that charter that could have been better at the time of implementation, that if our office had been involved, might have been better at the time of implementation, setting aside the piece that we had legal questions about. We could decide down the road whether or not we were going to actively defend those pieces that we had legal questions about. So this long-winded answer to your yes or no question is that if I could do it again, we would be involved from the beginning, and now that we have a second opportunity, I'm excited to be involved in that process.
Thank you very much. I yield.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Mr. Beath for all the work that you do in the community as well. I just can recall my six years being here on city council, you just being, first of all, a nice dresser.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. And also, just a very kind person. I just, you've always known you just to be a very pleasant, kind person. And to me, that goes a long way, especially when working in government. I have a couple of questions. Do you feel the Law Department has a high level of customer service to both internal and external customers? How would you approve on this? And then my, to craft that very specifically, too, is you talked about a lot of contracts. And in doing business as a council member and doing programming within, as a council member, too, one of the things that I've learned is the bureaucracy of government can be very daunting, especially to our internal and external, but more specifically to folks, vendors, people we're doing business with. And as Corporate Counsel, what is your take on looking at antiquated procedures and policies and things that old government tends to carry, and how would you look to impact that, when it concerning improving or looking at customer service both internally and externally?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the Law Department really deals primarily with our internal customers. One obvious separation from that is contracting, right? We're going back and forth, contracts with people. I am all about efficiency. So if there are old and bureaucratic systems that we can do away with, I'm happy to start that conversation and try to solve that problem. Now, I will also say that bureaucracy isn't there because everyone loves it. Bureaucracy is often there because in government, you need a number of checks and balances to protect against fraud, to protect against waste, that sort of thing. So I think some of the bureaucracy is here to stay, but ease of access, and especially if we're negotiating a contract, you know, not with Verizon, who's going to have top-notch attorneys, and they get it, but maybe with a small local vendor who's doing a few programs for drives, right? That's a different story, and those folks may get a PSA, a form PSA, and not know what half of the contents of that PSA mean, right? It's a bunch of legalese or boilerplate. If that's a barrier for folks, and it's something that's coming to your attention, that's something I'd like to know about, because if we can make that into more plain English or have an accompanying document in plain English that spells out exactly what those provisions mean, I'm happy to tackle that problem. As to customer service, I think more generally, what I would like is for the Law Department to operate as a small law firm. And law firms need to be responsive, and they need to be clear about goals and timelines. And I have some staff that's very good with that, and I have other staff that's not very good with that. And so one of my challenges as Corporation Counsel is going to make sure that everybody in my office is on the same page about being clear in our client communications, clearly communicating timelines, and if there are changes in those timelines, clearly communicating what those changes are.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that answer. My final question, the Law Department, I'm sure, struggles with diversity, as many other departments may do. What specifically would you do to make sure your department better reflects the community it serves? More specifically, what would you do to attract, recruit, and retain more attorneys of color?
So I agree, our department could be more diverse, I wish it were. We're trying hard to make it more diverse. Some of the things we've done, and that I continue to intend to do, is we've encouraged all of our attorneys to join not only the Monroe County Bar Association, but the Greater Rochester Association of Women's Attorneys and the Rochester Black Bar Association. We've encouraged our attorneys to join these organizations irrespective of their own race or gender, because we want to be making connections with folks in those communities so that they understand what the work is that we do in our office. Quite frankly, I think the work that the City of Rochester Law Department does is some of the most rewarding legal work that is done in this city. There are many days that I agree with the mayor entirely, that I too am not a big fan of lawyers, and I think that's because a lot of lawyers are just working for companies, and it's all about paycheck at the end of the day, and they just become a little bit rabid. I think when you're working in the public sector, you've got to be thinking about more than just the particular contract you're working on. You've always got to have the public in mind. And when you accomplish a project, you can see it in the city. You can see the program getting rolled out, you can see the building being built. I think it's important that all of my staff is out in the community, including communities of color, like the RBBA and GRAWA, and communicating that message and starting to pull more diverse attorneys into the Law Department. I also think as we're trying to recruit, we need to cast a wider net, and we need to think more long-term. So last summer, we participated in the Diversity Law Clerk Program. Jessica Simon, who was one of our star attorneys, started at the TVA and then came over, was doing nuisance enforcement. Unfortunately, we just lost her to Judge Doran, who poached her from us, yeah, terrible. She started at the Law Department as a diversity clerk. When I came to the City of Rochester in 2015, she was a clerk in the office. When I became Deputy Corporation Counsel some years later, and we were looking for a TVA prosecutor, I reached out to Jessica. She'd only had a year or two in practice by then, but I knew her, she knew the city, she came over right away. She was a rock star in the Traffic Violations Agency, she was a rock star as our nuisance attorney. She also is the president of the RBBA. I think we need to be participating in the Diversity Clerkship Program because of situations exactly like that. That may not be somebody that we hire into the Law Department next year, but two or three years down the road, we've got a diverse candidate who already knows us, we already know them, it's a match made in heaven just waiting to ripen, right? So I think that's another way to do it, too. We've got to be more robust in our connections we make early with law school folks. And when I say reach out further, I think we also need to network better with law schools around the country, and particularly the law schools that have a more diverse student population. We have not relied on law schools in our recruitment efforts to a great degree because we don't have the resources to train up a new attorney. If we get an attorney right out of law school, we just can't, they're book smart, but they're not practice smart. That doesn't mean we can't have interns come to us, right, and start building those connections early, and then when they've got a couple of years of practice and they're saying, boy, firm life isn't for me, we can say, great, I know a place that is, come work for the city. So I think there are a number of strategies that we can try to employ to improve our diversity.
Just a follow-up question, Mr. President. So when you encourage your staff, I think I heard you correctly, to join the GRAWA and some of these other organizations, are there joining fees for those organizations?
I should have been clearer, we pay those fees.
I was going to ask, maybe that's a better incentive, but you do?
We do that.
You will pay those fees if they choose to join.
Correct. It's not merely a matter of encouraging them, we tell them that we, and we do, we pay the fees if they choose to join.
Great, thank you.
All right, I want to insert my question here. Just thinking about your vision for the Law Department, you've said some things along the way here that kind of articulates your vision, but I'd like to understand, what might you change in the next, say, couple of years if you were to be the Corporation Counsel? Are there anything that, being the deputy for so long, that, you know, you would say, man, if I was the person in charge, this is what I would change? Could you maybe speak to some of that?
Yep, happy to. So there's a few things that I would change. One is, I frankly think we need to do more for morale in the department. The Law Department doesn't initiate projects in the city. We are support staff, essentially, for everything that goes on, right? Every contract that we work on is for somebody else's vendor. Every- Every litigation we have is because of something that happened in another department. So our folks don't get, I think, some of the public recognition that people get in other departments, right? We're not going to ground breakings. We're not getting a golden shovel, giant scissors to cut a ribbon. So I think we need to, in the Law Department at least, be recognizing our attorneys more for the accomplishments that they have. And it's very easy with the pace of work in the Law Department to forget to do that. So I'm going to make it a priority to make sure that we're letting folks know that we value the work they're doing. I also think, you know, we hear a lot of conversation about silos. The Law Department historically have a couple of individual silos. So we've historically had just a single person working in a particular practice area. I think that's problematic for a number of reasons. One, because it kind of isolates your colleagues from the work you're doing, right? They just kind of scratch their head and say, oh, I don't know how that labor and employment stuff works. It's, she's got it. It's in there. Folks should know what other people are working on, especially in such a small and collegial office. And then more importantly, it's no good for management. If we have one person working in one area of law, we lose that person. We lose that area of law. And so I want to make sure that in all of the different areas of law that we practice, we have a lead and then we have at least two other folks who are also working in that area, maybe not committing a majority of their time to that area, but at least are familiar with the practice. And the last thing I would do is, we need a, we need a case management system. Now, we've budgeted for that. We'd hope to get something in place this year. But for a variety of reasons, that hasn't happened. So we planned to RFP for something. But a case management system would make and would regularize a lot of the work that we're doing. We have kind of an antiquated file system right now that I think is adding a lot of inefficiencies. So a case management system would help us be much more efficient.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Yes, can you speak to what you believe the role of the Police Accountability Board should be, especially in light of the Court of Appeals decision?
So I'll tell you what the role of the Civilian Complaint Review Board was when I was there. And I think it was fairly, fairly effective in what it did, though. Well, let me start there. So the Civilian Complaint Review Board had independent investigative authority. They would receive complaints of misconduct and they would conduct the entire investigation themselves. Interview the complainant, interview witnesses, go to the scene, interview police officers, write a final report. Investigators would assess witness credibility. They would conduct a legal analysis. And they would make recommendations to the board as to whether or not the alleged misconduct occurred. Board would then either adopt those recommendations or not and send it off to the Police Department. The "send it off to the Police Department" piece of this I want to put aside. The CCRB was run, at the time I was there, by former prosecutors. Former prosecutors who had prosecuted police corruption. What those prosecutors established was an extremely rigorous investigative process and report-writing process, such that the work product of the CCRB was significant and credible. And so I think it made it hard for the NYPD to ignore some of what the CCRB was doing. I think an organization like that could be successful. I think we have challenges here. I think if we're going to do that, we need to engage the RPD and the Locus Club early in that conversation. What, when I was at CCRB, what it didn't have was very good teeth about getting confirmation from the Police Department. So recommendations would go over there and then Police Department could follow them or not. So I think here, we'd need to work on some sort of mechanism where there's a feedback from the chief to the PAB or to counsel or to other decision-makers. But I think the CCRB model has been effective in New York. It was effective when I worked there. And I'm happy to, you know, lend what I know about it to the effort as we start working on the charter.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And some of what you said, I think definitely can happen here in Rochester. However, I do see, you know, the barriers around accessing data, you know, preventing some of that work being done in a timely manner, in a way that's consistent, in a way where when someone files a report, they know once PAB submits a source of information request, things will start moving. The lack of procedural predictability when it comes to accessing data has been a huge issue. So I want to know how your office could possibly remedy that and create something, to help with the creation of something like what you said is happening with the NYC CCRB.
So when I was at the CCRB, the data flow process between the CCRB and the NYPD was essentially what it is today between the PAB and the RPD. The CCRB investigators, frankly, you know, this was, I was there from 2001 to 2006. So we're pre-iPhone, right? This is a different age of data. We would have a long eight-and-a-half-by-14 sheet that listed basically every police department document that would be relevant to a CCRB investigation. And the investigator, when they get the case, they'd have been trained on all these documents and on how policing works in New York. Get the case, interview the complainant, find out what happened. Then you go through this document and you check off all the documents that you think are relevant. Give it to the NYPD. NYPD liaison would go through it. And a week or two later, you would get back whatever of the documents you asked for NYPD has. If you didn't get the document, they didn't have it. That's essentially what's going on here. And I work with Captain Swetman regularly and I know he's working his tail off to try to turn those requests around as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, you know, when I was at CCRB, we had eight weeks of training before we'd start investigating anything. Like, full day, eight weeks. You know, trainings have happened, but not trainings to that degree. So I'm not sure whether the folks at PAB right now know enough about RPD operations, know enough about RPD documents to be able to kind of request specific documents like that. I've seen some of the SOIs and it calls into question for me whether they know what's out there and what they ought to be requesting. To your question, you know, I think that the system CCRB had when I was there was effective. And I'm happy to continue to work with PAB and with counsel with the RPD to find a way to get these documents to PAB.
Absolutely. And I really appreciated your response to Councilmember Gruber's question initially about being open and being at the table. So I'm hoping that with this new energy coming in, there will be a way to create what our community voted for, you know? I know the staff at the PAB is very interested in getting things done. And you sound like you are also interested in supporting our community in that effort. Another question I have is around working with counsel and procedurally how that works. So my ideas around legislation are likely going to differ from the president or another council member. However, we are empowered through the rules to be able to write legislation and go through that whole cycle. Can you talk about how you can, your office can work with individual council members to ensure that they have the support they need to go through that process? As you may with, let's say, the president, he may have an idea he wants to go through.
So let me, let me address it this way by analogizing to the way the legislative process works on the administration side. Before the Law Department is ever engaged in actually drafting legislation, the individual departments have already come up, and you've seen the legislation. I mean, it's very formalistic language, right? Before that ever happens, the individual departments draft up a transmittal letter. And the transmittal letter, in very plain English, explains what the project is or explains what the contract is, who the contractor is, what the amount is, what it's supposed to do. I think, and this is a conversation that President Melendez and I need to continue to have about exactly how this is going to go. But my thinking would be that counsel adopts something similar to that. And if an individual council member has an idea, they put it in something akin to a transmittal letter that in plain English says, here's what I'd like to do. And that runs through council leadership. And then if council leadership says, hey, yeah, great idea, let's talk to law. Now, you know, maybe that comes to law and we start talking about nuts and bolts of how we draft it, what the legal implications are, et cetera. What I want to avoid are a couple of things. As Deputy Corporation Counsel currently, I have a lot of demands on my time. What I've found in the last week and a half and should have suspected, having watched Corporation Councils over the last eight years, is things are still more busy for me, right? And so I would much rather have these things coming to me from counsel through a single conduit than through nine different voices who want to work on different pieces of legislation that at the end of the day may or may not make it through leadership or garner a majority of counsel. So I've got, so that's primarily practical considerations on my part. But I'm certainly, no system has been put in place. The president and I have only started these discussions. And, you know, I certainly don't want to do anything that would stymie good ideas.
Yes, I appreciate that. And I think when I first got onto counsel, there were rule changes made to prevent having to go through the president to make it more possible for individuals to have ideas and work collaboratively. So I'm interested in, you know, coming up with that procedure because it's not the, yeah, so the procedure part is really important to me in a way that is accessible to everyone, in a way that honors, you know, the changes to the rules we made to empower individual council members. And I'm very open to working with the president and whoever is interested in coming up with that process. Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. So as the old man on counsel, I can honestly say it has been my absolute pleasure to work with Patrick Beath.
Thank you.
There have been times, you know, I think back to our nuisance point system, which was struck down by the courts and ruled unconstitutional. Working with Patrick and Daisy Algarin and Nancy, we put together a team, we reviewed the legislation, we rewrote it, we passed it, and we dared the landlords to sue us because they had a routine habit of, because our legislation was unconstitutional. They had a routine habit of suing us, kicking our butt. We would pay them damages and it wasn't fun. And not only would they do that, they would come to counsel and show the big check where we paid them. It was not fun. And I can honestly say, Patrick, in my time, in my experience in working with him, has been a breathtaking legal mind. He, his ability of analysis in some instances has literally been, his analysis of the situation prior to going to court in many instances would end up being what the judge wrote. And I would sit there and go, so do you get a writing credit when the judge basically says what you told us? So I say all of that with praise, but I also have to say to you, you know, even though I'm saying all this good stuff about him, I also fight with this guy.
He's right.
So even though, you know, yeah, definitely making Corporation Counsel, you know, we got a whole Fourteenth Amendment fight going on right now. The rest of y'all don't, you know, council president knows about it and administration knows about it regarding the nuisance point system that we have. And we just don't, we just don't agree. I'm not going to get into that today.
Nor am I.
Good. But, you know, but also to that point, you know, and it's going to sound like it's a shot at the last Corporation Counsel. And it certainly is not a lot, a shot at the last Corporation Counsel. But kind of going back to cannabis again, cannabis growers showcase. We had somebody come through, beginning, I think it was Thanksgiving-ish, November, you know, sometime in November, hey, want to do a grower showcase in December? And they were told no because it was just going to be too much work for the Law Department to do. Well, I was, I had lunch with that person earlier in the week. And in the course of the conversation, they're like, well, you know, Mike, not to be funny, but at the same time I submitted the application to do a cannabis grower showcase in Rochester, I submitted it in four other communities. And I got approvals. So why is it that all these other communities had the attitude and the approach that, you know, this is allowed by, this is allowed by law? And, you know, what do we need to do? We need to sign, check, check, and move forward with the understanding that the state entity had the responsibility for making sure that that thing worked? But the City of Rochester had to engage in this heightened, extensive, drawn-out review that, from what I understand, other communities weren't. Like I said, this person, and I have the letters. I'll forward the approvals from the Cannabis Control Board saying, hey, here are your dates, here's your times, here are your locations, go get them. And it's a month, and it's literally two weeks. So how are you looking to be, how are you look, how how do we balance the just interests of protecting this community? And also allow commerce to go forward? Can you, if, and I'll let you just kind of wing that one however you want to go with it.
Okay, thank you. Attorneys are often known for saying no. And that no comes from a variety of places, often because the law just doesn't allow it. But the reason we do what we do is not to opine on the clear areas of law, the black and the white, the yes and the no, right? The work we do exists in the gray areas of law. And a good lawyer should be a problem solver. I'm not going to comment on the scenario you've depicted, right? Prior Corporation Counsel, the decision she made and that is what it is. My approach is, if there's a problem to solve, let's solve the problem. And if solving the problem means having at least an initial conversation to understand what it is that we're getting ourselves into, I'm going to take that conversation. That's something that I learned early in my time in the City of Rochester when I was a litigator. And we had a case where we were evicting somebody from the port building and they wanted to have a conversation. But we'd already filed the papers and we'd had plenty of conversations before. And I said, no, we're not going to have a conversation. And folks above me said, no, no, we always have a conversation. And I think that's the right approach. There's no sense in not having the conversation. Maybe the conversation doesn't go anywhere. But you got to have the conversation. So I can't tell you in that scenario if I would have done things any differently than Linda did. But I want to make sure that I'm fully informed when I make the decisions I make and I'm not suggesting that she wasn't. And to your question about how do you balance these concerns with, you know, progress and capital and that sort of thing? I mean, I think it's just understanding the priorities of the administration and what we can and can't do and having that conversation, which really shouldn't go, what is it you want to do? Oh, yeah, we can't do that. It is, what do you want to do? Well, I don't know if we can do it that way, but let's see if we can figure out something.
Yeah, thank you. No further questions. Councilmember Monroe?
I just have some follow-up to Councilmember Martin's questioning with the PAB. So in your experience when you were doing the CCRB, when your investigation was completed and handed over then to the Police Department, was that something that then you just waited to see how the chief decided to rule on that? And was the chief also then looking at another report that would have been put together by the Professional Standards Section?
So a few things about that. I should have said before when I was describing the work at CCRB, the CCRB had a much more limited the CCRB had a much more limited jurisdiction than the PAB does. The CCRB investigated allegations of excessive force, abuse of authority, discourtesy, and offensive language. The only area of overlap between that jurisdiction and the jurisdiction of the Internal Affairs Bureau, which was the NYPD's PSS, was the use of force area. Internal Affairs did not look at allegations of offensive language, discourtesy, or abuses of authority. They too had a more circumscribed, they looked at force, corruption, fraud, those issues. The NYPD, from the perspective of me as an investigator or supervisor of the CCRB, was a black box, right? We sent our investigation reports and determinations over, and then the chief did something with them. I did testify at a couple of departmental hearings. So, I do know that the police chief would issue charges resulting from a CCRB investigation. I couldn't tell you whether that was resulting solely from a CCRB investigation or also from an Internal Affairs investigation. So, in short, we knew very little of what the process was once it went over to the NYPD. And let me be clear, I was the supervisor of a team of investigators. I was not, you know, top-level staff at CCRB. So I was not having conversations with the NYPD as much earlier in my career.
Thank you. And also, I had the great opportunity to speak with you today as well about the breadth of things that you do up in the Law Department. And I don't have any further questions for you. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Hello, how are you?
I'm good. Be nice.
I will be. I have found you to be very accessible, fair, and caring, compassionate, and understanding in your communication, and I value you for that. And so my questions are around housing. Specifically, as it relates to homelessness and code enforcement. What is the role of the Law Department in each of those areas? And, how do you believe the community perceives those roles?
So, let me start with code enforcement. We have brought on an attorney who's dedicated to dealing with code enforcement and housing quality issues. Have you met him, Mike Ferrano? Have you met him?
I have not.
We should make that introduction.
Please.
Mike has excellent pedigree for the work. He was at Empire Justice Center and Legal Aid Society before that. He's done work in the landlord-tenant arena for many years. And he has been going at just full tilt, bringing cases against landlords who are just not making the code repairs. And there's a process, right? We give people notices and orders to make repairs. If they don't do it, we ticket them. Sometimes they don't care about the tickets because the repairs we're asking for are much more costly than the tickets. And so if that's not enough, then we bring them into court and we seek orders that require them to make the changes, injunctive relief from the court. And if they don't make those changes, those fixes in the time, then there are sanctions. And so Mike has been successful not only in getting folks to clean up their properties, but also in getting monetary sanctions from them. So, we've gotten money from landlords. Your question about how this is perceived by the community? I don't think we're getting that story out there. I don't think we're getting that story out there with enough detail. And I'm happy to, you know, work to figure that story out there better. It's out there, but I think it could be louder. So, we take the code enforcement piece very seriously. Mike is meeting with the code enforcement folks on a regular basis. He knows what the kind of top 10 worst folks are. And at any given time, right, because that fluctuates. And he's in court regularly. So I think the code enforcement piece, we have pretty well in hand. Homelessness piece is, in my opinion, a much trickier piece. And it's one that the Law Department, for the last couple of years, has been involved with. But that involvement has been greatly reduced. Most of the homeless efforts that the Law Department was involved in have now been moved to the Office of Emerging Initiatives. But what the city has done originally with the Law Department involved is implemented this kind of compassionate response to homelessness, where we work with numerous service providers and try to provide services for folks in conjunction with getting them housing, so that we get the street homeless off the street. There are some folks that that's very difficult. And I think we've got to think creatively about what the next steps are with those folks.
Great, thank you. And I would love to have that continued communication around the community's input and opinion and voice around this, the attorney and the work that they have been doing. So I look forward to that with you.
Okay, I have just a couple of quick follow-ups. With respect to what Councilmember Smith was just referencing, the housing component and taking folks to court. We have a one-man army, it feels like, right now. I think that's real. So, just wondering, and I know that every department has a budget, but in terms of the housing piece, in an ideal situation, is one person enough to manage the need and the demands in the community? Or is this something that you might evaluate?
It's something we can certainly take a look at. I mean, I will tell you that there is not a moment of Mike Ferrano's time that he is not grinding away. He works. We have open attorney positions and we have certain needs already. So I'm happy to have that conversation. I can certainly speak with him and speak with Kurt Martin about whether code enforcement, which obviously is handling a much larger volume of properties than make their way to the Law Department for enforcement, if it would make sense to make the Law Department's approach to this more robust. I'm happy to have those conversations.
Thank you. And my final question, and I'll check and see if my colleagues have any additional. Contracting, I know we have thousands of contracts to run through your office on an annual basis. One of the challenges, I think, for the vendor side of things, not necessarily internal to the Law Department, is the amount of time that it may take, depending on, there's nuance in every contract, certainly. Do you feel that you have the resources you need to move those in an appropriate manner? Or is this something that maybe we can do some evaluation around to see if there's any efficiencies to be gained? Particularly, I'll just point to one thing, without knowing the details and not knowing the nuance that's behind the scenes. When we did the Peace Collective, it felt like there was an extended period of time before we were able to get those contracts in place. And I know that it takes two to tango and there's other factors. But I just think an evaluation or understanding of where the hiccups might be would be worth our time.
So I will say that we have been down a transactional attorney for some time. And that's created a crunch. I can speak to the Peace Collective contracts. They were a little, they were not big contracts, but they were a little unorthodox. And so, I don't think that, I think once we're fully staffed and we have a transactional attorney starting in a week and a half, January 22nd, this is a gentleman who had been representing Redco. He's now coming over here. So I think with that additional attorney on staff, we're not going to have any problems with moving through contacts at a, contracts at a good clip. But if counsel is seeing issues, please bring them to my attention.
Will do. All right, any additional questions? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, in the packets we received, one of the typical work activities, and this is just a question to gain some clarity. It says, "May, with approval from city council, enter into any agreement and to compromise and settle any claim against the city." Until reading this, I wasn't aware that counsel had been involved in settling claims or compromising. Could you speak to how counsel, this body specifically, has been involved in that?
Sure. That language is based on language in the charter that talks about corporation counsel having the authority to settle any case subject to the appropriation of counsel. So every year, or every, it's not every year, periodically, legislation is brought to you to fund the insurance reserve. And so it's the insurance reserve, which is the money appropriated for the settlement of claims and cases. And so, you have to appropriate the money before corp counsel is able to authorize the money to be spent on the settlement.
Got it, that's helpful. So not the individual cases, just the?
Just the fund, the insurance reserve, yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, any additional questions? Hearing no other questions, that concludes our confirmation hearing for corporation counsel. Did legislation for both, the Budget Director and corporation counsel, be considered at our next council meeting on Tuesday, January 23rd at 6:00 PM here in chambers? Mr. Beeath, thank you for your service and your answers today. Have a good night, everyone.